Xfinity, channels 25 and 1085, Verizon Vias channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after the meeting as well. Check the Planning Commission website for further information. Audio for tonight's meeting is also available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. And please keep your cameras off until the clerk calls on you to speak. When called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located on your meeting command bar. The moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Once you have spoken, please turn your cameras off. If you are dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Public speakers, you'll be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at tonight's meeting was required. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. Speakers will have two minutes to comment as an individual and three minutes to comment as a representative of an organization or county board-appointed advisory. A timer will be displayed on the screen when speaking virtually. Speakers in person will follow the timer on the podium. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible 30-second warning. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website via a link to YouTube as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
Thank you. Our first item for the evening is a new site plan to construct a four-story assisted living facility operated by Sunrise Senior Living located at 716 South Glebe Road. We have Kevin Lamb, our project manager, to present this item this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Lamb with the Planning Division, and tonight I'll be presenting the Sunrise South Glebe project. The subject item consists of two parts. The first is a rezoning request to SD Special Development District. And the second is a new site plan request for the assisted living facility. So the site is located at 716 South Glebe Road in the Alkova Heights neighborhood. It also sits adjacent to the privately-owned Alkova House, which is designated a local historic district. So the site itself is occupied by the church building, a vacant single-family residence, as well as a large surface parking lot. And the church building was recently occupied by the Redeemer Church of Arlington, a daycare and a preschool, all of which have relocated their programs to other locations in Arlington. So the GLUP designation for the site is primarily semi-public, which is shown in green, with a small area of the site designated low residential, shown in yellow. As I previously mentioned, applicant is requesting a rezoning from R6 and R5 to the SD Special Development District. And the SD zoning district permits elder care uses through special exception and is consistent with the semi-public GLUP designation. So the new site plan consists of a four-story assisted living facility operated by Sunrise Senior Living. It includes 99 assisted living and memory care units at a total density of 1.0 FAR. So the site features a driveway and port caser located off of South Glebe Road, and this is designed to provide covered and convenient pickup and drop-off for residents, as well as emergency vehicle access, which is a standard feature for this type of use. So the site also includes a total of 53 parking spaces, which are primarily located in a rear surface parking lot, but there's also a handful of spaces just off the port caser. The project will be built at a LEED Silver certification level, and the applicant is requesting zoning ordinance modifications for required parking, as well as a front setback modification on South Glebe Road. So through the site plan review process, the applicant did make important design improvements based on staff and community feedback, including improvements to the South Glebe Road frontage, as well as the port caser area. So as you can see here, originally, the project's front entrance was situated 75 feet from the Glebe sidewalk. It also featured a pretty large port caser structure with a pitched roof, and then also included five short-term parking spaces off to the side. So in order to better engage the streetscape and reduce the auto-oriented nature of this port caser area, staff did recommend reducing the building setback, as well as the overall area dedicated to vehicles. So as a result, on the right-hand side, the applicant did minimize the depth of the driveway to 70 feet. It minimized the height, as well as the scale of the port caser. It reduced the number of short-term parking spaces to four, and then also introduced permeable pavers in the parking spaces, as well as underneath the port caser structure. So in terms of transportation, the site includes three vehicular access points. The first is a right-in, right-out driveway off of South Glebe Road, which serves the front entrance. There's also a curb cut on 8th Street, which serves the surface parking lot, as well as the secondary building entrance. And then off 7th provides access to the loading and trash area. So in terms of parking, they are providing 53 surface parking spaces at a reduced parking ratio of .44 spaces per bedroom. And then lastly, all adjacent streetscapes will be expanded to include a six-foot sidewalk and a five-and-a-half-foot planting strip. So the review process for this project began back in February, followed by an online engagement opportunity in March, and then two SPRC meetings covering the following topics. So overall, the site plan is consistent with the GLUP and the zoning ordinance, as well as advances several key county goals and objectives. So the first, the project will provide 99 assisted living and memory care units, which provides more housing options for aging residents and advances the housing goals of the Age-Friendly Arlington Action Plan. The project will also provide the base affordable housing contribution, which is the choice of a cash contribution to AHIF or one affordable unit. The project provides the streetscape improvements on all adjacent street frontages. And lastly, the project will be built at a LEED Silver certification level and also feature electric vehicle charging, permeable pavers, and other biophilic design elements like green roofs. So therefore, staff recommend adoption of the ordinances listed here. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I believe the applicant has a presentation? Please.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Can you turn your mic on, please?
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Better?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get into the project, I just want to tell you a little bit about Sunrise Senior Living. So at Sunrise, we are a mission-based organization. Our mission is to champion quality of life for all seniors. We also have a forward-looking vision statement, which is to create the preferred lifestyle for enjoying longer, healthier, happier lives. Sunrise is one of the largest providers of senior housing in North America. We have nearly 275 communities. We were founded 40 years ago here in Northern Virginia, and in fact, our very first purpose-built Sunrise was Sunrise of Arlington at 2,000 North Glebe Road, which is a community that we still operate today. We provide a full spectrum of senior care options, from independent living through skilled nursing, but our specialty is really in assisted living and memory care, which is what we are proposing for the site here. Assisted living is for seniors in the assistance of activities of daily living. This includes bathing, dressing, using the bathroom, mobility and meals, and memory care is for seniors with Alzheimer's and other memory impairments. Well, traditionally, Sunrise built only Victorian-style buildings, which I'm sure many of you have seen across the DMV. Over the last 10 years, we've become much more forward-looking with our design, and now each building is really designed to fit in with the local vernacular of each neighborhood. So for example, here's four recent Sunrise's that we've built in different markets across the country: Newton, Massachusetts, Burlingame, California, Issaquah, Washington, and some in New Jersey. And you can see each building is designed a little bit differently to fit in with the neighborhood. When we look at Arlington market specifically, we find that there is a significant imbalance between available supply and needed demand for our type of building. And in fact, there actually has not been a new senior housing project built in Arlington County in over 20 years now. When we estimate the needed supply of assisted living units within just three miles of the site, we estimate there's a need of about 1,100 units, while there's only about 482 today. And when we look at memory care units, we estimate there's a need of about 600 units, while there's only about 100 units today. Clearly, there's a great need for new senior housing in Arlington County. Now we'd like to take a look at the actual site. So looking at the area around the site, it's located on South Glebe Road between Arlington Boulevard and Columbia Pike. The area is mixed-use, there's a variety of both single-family homes, tall apartment towers up to six or seven stories, churches, schools, fire stations, and other commercial uses. And here we have a zoomed-in view of the site, again, 716 South Glebe Road. We're on South Glebe, on the west side of Glebe, between 7th and 8th Streets. So here we have an aerial view of the existing conditions today. There's the existing church building with the partially demolished roof at the bottom of the image, the large surface parking lot, former pastor's house at the top right. There's currently four curb cuts on site, with one on 7th Street, a double curb cut on Glebe, and one off of 8th Street at the bottom. You can also see the existing building locations in proximity to our neighbors. So on the north side, we're about 97 feet from our neighbors. The northwest, we're about 36 feet from our neighbors. From the historic Alkova House, we're about 150 feet. And for our neighbors in the south, we're about 109 feet from our neighbors today. And so here we just have some views of the existing conditions. So first is looking south down Glebe from 7th Street. You can see the former pastor's house at the corner, the white building on the right side there with the church in the background. The second image is from Glebe and 8th Street looking north. You can see the church in the background, as well as the existing bus stop that will be retained at the corner. The third view here, this is 8th Street looking east. You can see the existing curb cut with the open-air garbage dumpsters that are there today. The fourth view is from the rear surface parking lot. From this view, you can see a portion of the church roof that was previously demolished due to structural issues. And the fifth view here is the corner. This is looking east down 7th Street. This is the former pastor's house at the corner that will be part of the larger development. And now we'd like to take a look at our proposal for the project here. So first, this image here, this is just an illustrative image to show what the building massing for the site would be if you kind of maxed out the densities, if you did six stories and the minimum setbacks, you could kind of have this monolithic block on the site here, which is obviously not our intention. Next slide, please. So here you can see what we're proposing for massing for the site. So we're proposing four stories. And as you can see, we've pushed our building as close to Glebe Road as possible to try to minimize the impact on our neighbors. And so here you can see our proposed site plan for the development. The first item I'm going to point out is that we've, again, strived to push the building as close to Glebe Road as possible to give that relief from our neighbors. In fact, we are 17 feet and eight feet further from our neighbors on the north and south sides, respectively. We're about 18 feet further from our neighbors in northwest compared to existing, and we're a full 86 feet further from the historic Alkova House to the west. We're proposing, sorry to go back, we are proposing four curb cuts, the same number that are there today. We'll have one on 8th Street with access to the small rear parking lot, a double curb cut on Glebe with a drop-off porcha share, and a single curb cut on 7th Street to allow for loading and garbage pickup, which will be a loading zone that will be fully enclosed within the building. I also just wanted to point out the significant increase in street trees bordering the property, new sidewalks, vast planted gardens, and walking paths around the building, as well as proposed new fencing and landscaping along the western boundary of the property. Our proposed development is an assisted living and memory care building, approximately 93,000 feet and 99 units. The building will be approximately 49 feet tall, and there will be 53 parking spaces on site. We are a very low-traffic generating use and at full occupancy. We anticipate our largest employee shift to be 33 team members arriving on site by 7:00 AM through a combination of driving, public transportation, including the bus stop immediately in front of the building, car share, biking, and walking. Our team numbers then declined throughout the day. We'll have about 17 during the afternoon and approximately six employees overnight. Finally, we are requesting a modification of the Arlington County zoning ordinance of reduction of seven parking spaces. Here's our proposed landscape plan. Just to note, we will be increasing the overall landscape areas, including the walking, including the green areas and walking paths by nearly 2,400 square feet compared to what's there today. We'll also be increasing the tree canopy by nearly 5,000 square feet, and we will be decreasing the amount of impervious asphalt by nearly 12,000 square feet compared to what's there today. We will also be introducing significant native plantings and biophilic landscaping throughout the site. In regards to building access, as I mentioned, there will be a fully enclosed loading zone in the north side of the site, as shown in blue. There will be a drop-off package delivery and short-term parking off of Glebe Road, shown in orange. And there will be visitor and employee parking and rear entry access on the west side of the site, as shown in yellow. In addition, there is an existing bus stop in front of the site that will be maintained, and we will also be providing six Class 3 bike parking spaces adjacent to the front entry, and four Class 2 bike parking spaces adjacent to the rear entry, as well as locker and shower facilities for all of our employees. And finally, there is, of course, an extensive network of pedestrian sidewalks around the site that we will also be improving. Now we have some renderings of the project. So this is the first view is from Glebe facing the front door of the building. We've strived through our design, if you go back one please. We've strived through design to introduce an arts and crafts style here that's similar to the bungalows that are found throughout the neighborhood. As I mentioned, we are proposing a four-story building off of Glebe with the main entrance and porcha share seen there in the front. Next is a view of the building from 7th and Glebe looking south. This is the view from 8th and Glebe looking north. Again, you can see the bus stop in the front there that will be maintained. And finally, this is a rendering of the building from the rear, so you can see the small surface parking lot in the foreground with the building in the background. So next, we have several renderings highlighting some of the landscaping around the site. We'll try to go through these quickly for time. So this is 8th Street looking east. You can see the walking paths, the sidewalks, the street trees, and all the enhanced landscaping next to the building. Not that fast. Oh, thank you. Got it. Appreciate it. Again, means a whole amount of times. We're going to fly through these. Happy to come back to some of these beautiful pictures, of course. Transportation. As I mentioned, the site is extremely well-connected. There's bus lines, pedestrian access, the Boston Metro, as well as a number of bicycle facilities nearby. We're actually a very low-traffic generator. We're going to generate less traffic today than what's, excuse me, in the future than what happens today. We're also going to be doing a number of traffic improvements, including new curb ramps and sidewalk striping. Next slide. Like both 7th and 8th Street. I could just have 30 more seconds. Last couple slides. I just wanted to point out, this is important, on Glebe Road, the condition day is really not a wonderful one. You have a retaining wall. You have a five-foot sidewalk, and you're only one and a half feet setback from the curb. It's not a very nice experience. For our project, we'll be eliminating the retaining wall, create a lot more maneuverability. Our sidewalk's going to be a full six feet, and we're going to be five and a half feet back from the roads, will be additional four feet from what's there today. And finally, last slide, I do want to just touch on sustainability, of course. So for sustainability, we will be utilizing the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design or the LEED certification, which is, of course, the globally-recognized symbol of sustainability achievement. We will be targeting LEED Silver, which has proven to save money, improve efficiency, lower carbon emissions, and create healthier places for people. We'll also be targeting a 20% energy performance savings, as well as several Arlington community priority credits, including Energy Star certification, envelope commissioning, and light pollution reduction. Thank you very much. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any commissions that wish to be heard this evening?
Yes. We have, is she sad enough to speak? Joan McIntyre.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joan McIntyre, speaking on behalf of the Climate Change, Energy, and Environment Commission. C2E2 recommends that this project not be approved. Using our standard checklist, C2 gives this a score of 39 out of 100, which is about the lowest score we do, and it really fails to meet the minimum required to meet Arlington County's carbon neutrality goals. The applicant is not participating in the green building incentive policy, which, while voluntary, represents the absolute minimum in sustainability. The project's target for LEED Silver is a fairly low bar to meet. The applicant is committing to energy efficiency gains of 16%, although they aim to try to get to 20, which is above the ashray baseline, but is not only much lower than C2E2's recommended 25%, but below the 20% that's required in the county site plan conditions. HVAC, hot water, and cooking will be fueled by onsite fossil gas, and the applicant is apparently not considered a pathway to all-electric, energy-efficient systems. The project offers only a mediocre plan for other sustainability elements that would help reduce urban heat island impact, offer residents closer connections with nature, and manage stormwater runoff. Reduction in the proposed surface parking, perhaps with a garage, would reduce the overall footprint and provide more space for tree canopy coverage and natural plantings. Adding solar panels to the parking area would meet some of its energy needs and provide energy resilience for the facility. The landscaping relies heavily on grass and low-level plantings with limited tree canopy coverage, which will become increasingly important as outdoor temperatures continue to rise. The project only meets minimum stormwater required for going any LEED points for retaining stormwater for a minimum of an 80th percentile storm. C2E2 understands that the project needs to meet the special needs of assisted living facility, including continuous operation in an emergency. But experts on assisted living design have pointed out that net-zero energy buildings, consisting of high-performing building envelopes, heat pumps, and other efficient electric systems, and onsite solar are most resilient during an extreme climate event. We are facing a catastrophic climate crisis that requires immediate actions by individuals, governments, and businesses to avoid the worst consequences. We urge the planning committee to recommend this project not be approved until the key shortfalls are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Any other commissions?
We have another speaker.
Another commission or just another public speaker?
No, I have another public speaker.
Public speaker? Okay. I was about to ask for any public speakers?
Yeah. Our next speaker is Cynthia Schneider. She's online. Thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Ms. Schneider, hello.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Schneider. I am representing the Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging supports this project going forward. As county demographers have indicated, and as the data presented by the developer, there is a need for this type of facility in the county. The last one that was built was sometime in the 80s. Several years ago, the board approved a development of an assisted living facility on Cherry Hill Road, which used to be old Lee Highway. That project never went forward, and recently, the land was sold to another developer. So the need is great for this facility. But the Commission on Aging is very disappointed that the developer has not committed to setting aside some units as affordable units. Both Alexandria and Fairfax County have policies where assisted living facilities set aside a certain number of units as affordable, and we would like to see this project have a similar commitment to affordable units set aside either under the auxiliary grant program or at a discounted rate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
Our next speaker, our last speaker on this item is John Musso.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is John Musso, Government Affairs Manager at the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, I would like to express our strong support for this project moving forward, for the site plan to be recommended for adoption by the county board. As stated by the previous public speaker and by the representative of Sunrise, Northern Virginia is currently facing a very severe shortage of senior housing units, particularly assisted living and memory care units. And the addition of 99 total senior housing units through this project is a huge step ahead in terms of addressing this issue and addressing the significant shortage of new senior housing in Arlington recently. Sunrise has been an operative senior housing in Arlington for almost 40 years at this point and has been a very trusted addition to this community, and we look forward to them having this brand-new property on South Glebe Road in a very accessible location in South Arlington, very accessible to North Arlington and much of Northern Virginia as a whole. So we strongly urge the Planning Commission to move forward and recommend the adoption of the site plan amendment and move this project forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And that's all the public speakers? Okay. The matter is now with the, I was about to ask, well, it comes to the commission, then I was going to go to you. Is that not okay? Okay. Now with the commission, and the first item of business is to hear from Transportation Commission. Commissioner Lantome?
Yes, this was heard before the Transportation Commission last Thursday. It was approved unanimously by the TC. Discussion topics were the parking, which upon discussion was deemed to be acceptable. We talked about the TNP and the transit accessibility here, location of the bus stops, and we also discussed the sidewalk and the improvements of that sidewalk. Other than that, the commission was very pleased with this project and recommended it moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Lantome. It was a good report from Transportation Committee. Any other commissions here that heard this? Okay. Who was the SPRC? Leo. Oh, hello. Hi. Yes, you. Sorry. Look everywhere, but immediately to my right. Do you have a report you'd like to?
I submitted the report to the commission, I think it was Monday night, just before our other meeting. There weren't too many issues on this. As you've heard, there's strong demand for this sort of use, but I think the question was, we are changing the use, so we just need to, I think, talk about that a little bit and make sure we're all comfortable with it. I have to say, I'm a little bit disappointed with the E2C2 report also, because silver really is like more of a bronze if we're talking about it. It's really the third rating. So I think, you know, any opportunities that can be there. Other than that, the committee had a really good sort of process, and I think it's generally well-received.
Thank you very much. I generated some topic areas that I thought we would focus on for this evening. I will read those, and then if anyone has any topic areas they would like to add, I will make notes. So transportation and parking is one. Design massing, any feedback on that? Affordable housing and sustainability, that is what I had. Any topics we would like to add to that? Yes, Commissioner Bagley?
Construction.
Construction, yep.
Even if just in passing?
Sure. And we may start with that one.
And I have an item. There's been some community comments about preservation. I'm about to have just a quick discussion on that.
On preservation? Okay. That's funny. I actually had that, and I was wondering if any of us was going to raise that. So I will add that back in. Okay. I'm going to bounce around from the list that I just gave. Okay, I'm gonna bounce around from the list that I just gave. I think I'd like to start with use, because that feels like a top-level item. So, Commissioner Sarley, if you wanted to?
Sure, I think, and Kedrick, you can sort of perhaps give us a little bit of a rundown of what it is that we're doing with the zoning. But essentially, I think the use here is residential, and we're essentially using this as a, you know, elderly care, old person care. I think that's the more appropriate way to say that. And I think, you know, generally speaking, we didn't hear too much pushback during the process, but I just want to make sure everyone gets a chance to hear that.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner Sarley. Kedrick Whitmore with Venable. So, yes, that's accurate, that the current zoning of the site is a residential zone. Our requested rezoning to SD is in line with the recommendations of the general land use plan, so you do have a GLUP recommendation that does go to the SD. So that's facilitating this rezoning to allow for the senior living, proposed senior living use.
I know there's definitely some discussion in the community. This is not a question, it's more of a statement. There was some discussion in the community, and then at the two SPRCs about the use, and it's gonna be senior living, you know, versus, you know, other residential. But the way that I look at it, ultimately, the church decided to make this transaction. And so this is, you know, why we have a senior living proposal. The other thing, thinking about, you know, the current state, or I guess was the current state, was that it was a church, and then we had, what, two childcare facilities located in there? I know one personally, I had a connection to it formerly. And so I'm just thinking out loud, not specific to this project, but I think it is important that we think about, you know, the churches that we have that are in similar conditions, you know, whether we're okay with things like this, like how they're gonna be repurposed. Because a lot of them are, they're sort of our venues for a lot of affordable childcare, and we're seeing more and more of them redevelop into different entities. Fortunately, I'm familiar with both of these programs, and I believe they've both relocated successfully. That's good. But it's just, I think, something for us to think about from a policy perspective. That's it.
Great, thank you.
I'll just associate myself with Commissioner Burkey's comment. I think there's a whole typology that's kind of getting swept under the rug, and maybe that's okay. But, you know, I think as the commissioner just mentioned, there's a lot of associated uses and community benefits that go with these type of, like, church buildings.
Or on parking and transportation, anyone comments or feedback on parking and transportation? Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
Is anybody surprised by me asking about transportation? This is tied to the sustainability piece that C2E2 mentioned. I noticed that in a few places I've been to, that they have these sort of solar, I don't know what they call it, sheds that go over top of parking spaces that provide the sort of cover for the cars underneath, and they generate solar energy for onsite. And I wondered if you had all thought about that. Panels might be a little tricky because of the way the roof's set up, but I was wondering if there are any other alternatives of using, say, the parking lot as a way to generate onsite solar, as a way of sort of meeting more of the sustainability goals that we had set out for in the county plans.
Thank you for your question. The answer is yes, we did explore it. I think the two challenges that we've had, first, two challenges we found were, first of all, the feasibility, the economic feasibility, we found the cost of it to be too high for the project to bear. And I'd say the bigger issue is really just the infrastructure of setting it up would significantly impact the number of parking spaces. It would actually result in having to expand the amount of parking. If you can imagine the infrastructure of setting it up and having all of the piles, you'd end up having to have a much larger parking field, which we didn't have room for, and unfortunately, the project wouldn't support a below-grade garage, so it just didn't seem feasible here.
Would it be possible to maybe stack, maybe at two levels of parking, something like that, still get the coverage?
So unfortunately, that does go to the issue of the surface parking here in general, which is, these buildings are extremely expensive to build and operate. And so unfortunately, in this location, for it to be a feasible project, it required a surface parking lot. Any sort of below-grade or stacked parking wouldn't make it feasible. We did look at opportunities, we did work with staff to try to minimize the impact of the parking. So first of all, we reduced several parking spaces to make it as small as possible. We also introduced a number of trees within the parking lot to help relieve some pressure there, as well as introducing permio pavers everywhere that we could to help reduce the impact as well.
Yeah, I noticed all those. Those are all good, good things, but thank you for that.
I will associate myself with Commissioner Schneider's comments. I'm disappointed that we're not seeing solar somewhere or some other efforts to kind of get beyond lead silver. I do think that, you know, we as a county are moving more in the direction of greater sustainability, and that's something that we're emphasizing for all of our developers, that really we're getting to a point where silver's not gonna cut it. I am very, you know, supportive of bringing additional, you know, elder care facilities online in this community, and I think this is absolutely a need for the community. I, you know, it's hard to make these kind of trade-offs, because you certainly want the buildings that we're building to meet the other goals that we have as well. You know, we need housing for seniors, but we also need to protect the environment, because that is, you know, as a county, we've stated that that is an important goal for us. So I'd like to see what we could do to, and if we can't get to lead gold, if there's other things we can do to increase our score here. I think that the C2E2 report gave us some thoughtful ideas on other actions that could be taken to improve this project in that regard. I did have a question, and I apologize if I missed it. Electrical vehicle charging, are you gonna have any spots that support that?
Yes, we will have five percent of the spaces installed today for electric vehicles.
Okay, and is there any possibility to increase that number beyond five percent, to have spaces that are ready to be converted to that, because the numbers indicate that everybody's buying a Tesla or something?
Yes, we did study this. We will have the ability to upgrade the rest of the spaces to EV chargers in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on transportation, parking, anything?
I did have another one. I missed it in my notes here. And so I noticed there were five temporary spots out front, and that number was knocked down to four. My one question is, did you, well, I'm assuming you all looked at that to see if that is a sufficient number of spaces, especially considering it's an elder care with a lot of moving parts. And two, if it's not, will there be a possibility for maybe the units, the parking spots in the back, to be used as temporary or guest parking in the event that there is that kind of overflow?
So first of all, all of our parking is typically shared between both employees and visitors, so it's not just one or the other. For the spaces in the front, we actually worked extensively with staff on this issue, because they had a similar question, which was, their question was, was it too many? And so we worked with them, and so from our experience operating two-hundred-and-seventy-five buildings, we do find it's very important to have a number, a certain number of temporary spaces in the front, because lots of people pull up and they want to park temporarily and leave. We think that any less than four would probably not be enough. We think that four will be sufficient.
Awesome, okay. Yeah, and I did want to praise the way that you all have it set up, especially the loading dock section being away from the rest of the parking. I think that that was very well done, especially given it's a memory care facility where you have individuals who might not be, you know, aware of situations like that. So I really think that's well done. That's all from me.
I'm in a fight with my microphone. Okay, any other comments on transportation parking? Okay, great. Historic preservation, Commissioner Lantelme, you'd indicated you had a comment in that area?
Yeah, recent master, there was a letter in the Washington Post, and also one of the public, I think it was the same person, submitted a letter asking about whether we could preserve some of the part of the church that's already there. I'd just actually like to ask staff, has, did anybody in either the community or anybody else actually petition to preserve this? Did anybody in the county look to see whether this building had any historic value that should be added to the inventory? I'm not necessarily seeing it, I'm not advocating. I'm just wondering, did this come up before this?
Right, so to my knowledge, no one has petitioned to kind of have a historic designation for the existing church. However, you know, the project was surveyed by historic preservation staff before, and it isn't listed on the historic resources inventory, nor has it been designated a local historic district. So, you know, given that, there's not a whole lot of policy guidance in terms of preservation efforts. So, to answer your question, there hasn't been any petitions?
And, you know, I know that these type of facilities are very specialized, but was there any, originally looking at the property, was there any consideration? Can any of this be otherwise repurposed?
Yes, we did look at opportunities to preserve some of the building, but unfortunately, we found that because of the age of the building and the structure, it wanted to be rebuilt there, it wasn't possible. Just to echo Kevin's comments, we also did a search, did not find the building listed on any, either Arlington County Historic Society pages or on the National Historic Registry. The only item that we did find, though, is there was a historic rose stained glass window within the church, and we've actually already worked with the Arlington Historic Society, and that window's already been donated to them.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Sarley?
If I may, we did talk about that a little bit during the SPRC, and I just want to point out that while the roof and some of the wood parts of the structure are indeed falling apart, a lot of the masonry actually was in really good condition. So I do regret that we were not able to preserve at least segments or, you know, portions of the masonry.
Thank you. Anything else on historic preservation? Okay, design and massing, anyone want to comment on that? That was covered in the SPRC report, so as well.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm very gratified that the whole building did get moved closer to Lee Road. I think that worked out really, really well in a lot of ways. So, you know, I think that was an excellent modification.
Personally, I like the design. Were you raising your hand? No, Commissioner Sarley?
I'll opine, because this is the area that I tend to opine on. I think the design is very suited to the site, and I think it does sort of accommodate well the massing and the relationship with the residential. I think, you know, this is just, again, just almost academic. You know, the vernacular is a little bit off the mark. It's like a bungalow thing, which, you know, bungalows are by definition sort of universal. But it's nice. Again, I'm not being critical. I think it would have been fun, perhaps, to, again, pick some of the elements of the existing church. You know, this sort of neo-colonial, as much as I'm not a fan of colonial architecture, I think it could have been fun to sort of be a little nostalgic almost with what the building was there. But again, this is just for future more than actually this one, but thank you for indulging.
No problem. Commissioner Schreiner?
What he said. No, I really did like the design of it.
All right, let's move on to affordable housing. I think we might have some people who want to be heard on that. Commissioner Bagley?
So, if this were built today, and I was wanting to go there, what would it cost for me to be there? Roughly, not exact.
We, of course, have not priced out this specific location, but it would probably be in the range of, you know, five to ten thousand dollars a month.
Okay, all right. So, also, and I know that we sat through this on one of the SPRCs, I don't know that I attended both, but you are undecided yet right now for cash or one unit? Are you leaning? Kind of, yes?
And Chair's not here, but I'll take your recognition. Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. We've been working on this, and staff will attest to how many times we have called them about this since SPRC. And I want to thank also Ms. Schneider for her comments. She was in the same boat here. So, we've been wrestling with this for some time, and I want to just walk us through it here, since we've had a couple of comments on it. So, I think first, and I know you know this, but some others may not, in terms of level-setting with the county's affordable housing policy, right, there are two buckets of affordable housing. There's the base contribution that is required of all site plans over a 1.0 FAR, and then there's a bonus for any kind of bonus density above that. I know typically this body sees projects that are subject to both, right, that are frequently getting bonus density. This project is not getting bonus density, so that kind of onsite affordable related to the bonus density is not in play here. We're focusing specifically on the base contribution. So, the base contribution is covered in the zoning ordinance. It lays out the procedures for that. And it provides that the developer receives the option to either provide the cash contribution or the onsite units, and then that concept is carried into the site plan conditions. And the site plan conditions, the standard, and including this one, essentially the developer has to elect that prior to the Shell and Core Certificate of Occupancy. So that is the kind of normal course, is that a developer doing the baseline contribution will be able to wait until that point. At that point, they will elect one option or the other, and they'll go forward with it. So, we've, again, heard you, we've heard Ms. Schneider about the desire for onsite units here to fulfill that base obligation, you know, despite there being the choice, the desire to see that. And that's where we have struggled some, and what we've spoken with the county quite a bit, and I'll walk through a little bit of why that's been the case. So the county, as you can expect, has got a policy and a formula that determines what a monetary contribution would be and what a onsite unit contribution would be. And you saw that in Mr. Lamb's presentation of what those would add up to. The struggle that we are having is that, you know, these numbers should be roughly equivalent, right? The values should be about the same, so the developer can make the choice one way or the other. The problem is that that analysis is done based on the affordable unit or units being multifamily, right? Being elements where rent is what is taken into account. When you get an affordable unit, you have a discount on rent. The problem is that with senior housing, we have a lot of costs beyond just rent, right? We have the rent, we have food, we have internet, we have phone, we have transportation, and we have, what is the largest and the most unpredictable one, is medical. And one's medical costs can, as you all know, vary wildly, right? Between someone who has zero medical cost versus somebody who's on dialysis twenty-four hours a day. So, with that rubric and those issues in mind, we have gone to staff and said, "Staff, help us figure out how to do this," right? Because it's not apples to apples right now. And I will paraphrase staff, I'm sure they will want to weigh in as well, but their response was, "We don't have a policy to deal with that yet." I believe they are looking at it and they are working on it, but we aren't there today. So, the issue we've got is, we cannot be in a position to sign up and agree now, early, to a cost structure that we don't understand or know, or are able to quantify, because we don't know how to deal with those other costs. I understand staff is working on it. It may be done by the time we get to our Shell and Core COO, but at this point, we're staring into kind of a black box, and so have trouble committing at this point to doing an onsite unit. And I don't know if staff has anymore, and thank you for the opportunity. I know that was a long-winded explanation, but it's complicated, it's important, and I do want it to get the time it deserves, because we spent a lot of time trying to run this down after our discussions.
Right, I'd just like to echo, you know, Kedrick's point about, you know, housing staff have initiated a study trying to look at how affordability, you know, could be achieved in certain senior housing projects through special exception. That study is, you know, currently underway, so, you know, nothing has been adopted yet. But kind of just going back to just the initial question, which is, you know, it is up to the developer to choose at the time of Shell and Core CO.
Okay, I just have as Ms. Schneider said, you know, she would like to see more units there. You know, we have a struggle right now with a lot of people in Arlington who can't afford their internet, their groceries, anything. They're hanging on by their fingernails to stay here. You know, we don't have enough of the housing to even encourage them to stay here, and those who would love to maybe make this in their twilight years, their home, it's out of their range. So collectively, as a group here, we need to be doing a better job of addressing this, because it is a crisis, and we are already losing our people. We're gonna lose our seniors too, because it's not cheap to be in these places. So, thank you.
I'm going to take Chair's indulgence and call on myself. I was really excited about this project in terms, because some of the early SPRC, you know, conversations we had really did focus on, you know, a way that we could get some number of affordable units at this location. It's disappointing to hear that we hit some roadblocks with that. It sounded like, maybe from the report from the Commission on Aging, some of our neighbors have figured this out. So I'm curious if we can steal their approach, their data, their something to try to advance our efforts. I know, you know, not all counties are the same, but I think that we I know, you know, not all counties are the same, but I think that we would, I would hope we have some similarities with Fairfax in some ways, not in others. But it just, you know, I, I'd like to know where we can kind of leverage resources that already exist. So we can expedite this because my fear is that we're going to get to the point, you know, this project moves forward. We're not going to have a study complete where we feel like we can move forward. We have a developer who I think would be willing to work with us if we had a framework in place to do this. And I don't want to lose a really good opportunity to take advantage of that, to end up with them doing the basic cost contribution, just like everybody else that we're trying to move away from. Because this is, I'll repeat myself, a really great opportunity to do something different, to establish something different, to make a stand that this is how, what is vibrating? Is that me? My face? No.
Maybe.
My phone's not. I don't know what's going on. Okay. Um, thank you. I, I don't want to lose the opportunity here because we're, we're not, we're going to be able to move fast enough to take advantage of that. And I'm almost wondering if we can, you know, we have a willing partner, if there's a test case scenario where we can get some data to sort of allow us to refine it over time. I just, I, I don't want to lose momentum. I feel like we're losing momentum. That makes me frustrated. I'm done. Who, who else wants to talk? Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. I have a lot of thoughts, which I don't know where to start. Thank you for this project in the first place. I think it's fantastic to have another senior living facility in Arlington. It's something that we have as a recognized need. And so it's wonderful that you're coming to the table. I share the concerns of my colleagues and other commissions that we, the affordable housing aspect hasn't been figured out. I'm sure staff is looking into whether Medicare is going to offset the most expensive costs that you were alluding to. Though Medicare is sometimes, you know, not, not there as much as we need it to be. I also noticed in staff report, we're talking about maybe not having something onsite, but offsite nearby. Or just like an offsite unit. And maybe we don't provide affordable housing in this building, but if you have another building in Arlington, that's a bit more affordable. If that is an option that you guys are exploring. I think we're a couple of years out from when this building is going to get built, if I know. So we have a lot of time to figure this out since, since it's not, we don't need to figure it out until we get the certificate of occupancy. But I would just like to see, you know, what, what you guys are thinking about as options if, for, for meeting this need of everybody needing senior living facilities. Thank you.
I had Chair's permission to go next, so. And I'm going to say this because this was set at the committee, so I don't want to drop anything new on the applicant. But one of the things that I want to highlight is there is density being left on the table on this project. And so I think that's something that I personally would like to encourage the applicant to perhaps look at, you know, if not necessarily affordable, senior care. It could be affordable, just straight up affordable housing or staff housing, or, you know, anything like that, that. And I'm thinking through the architecture a little bit, it might have to have separate, you know, cores and all that other stuff. So I understand that's a little bit complicated, but perhaps there's a way to introduce just plain, straight up housing. You know, since there's some density on the table. I would personally encourage you to look at that and keep pushing with that. And I think this is something that we talked during SPRC. So, you know, I'm not dropping a new bomb on the applicant.
Okay. Can I just follow up on the points that I was making earlier since our chair is, oh, coming back? What, what are you all looking at for the offsite nearby or offsite unit? Is that just like in another building that you own or?
I, I think that is probably in there because the ordinance that I mentioned before with, with the option of cash or units, I was a little glib, but actually is, is for cash, onsite units, onsite nearby units or onsite elsewhere. So that calculus gets done in every staff report, whether or not that's a proposal, that's just part of the, the review is that calculus.
I think I'll be the last one to speak to affordable housing here. I guess Tony hasn't. I think I was still on the Housing Commission when the SPRC started. So this is a nice full, full circle. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you all are speaking and trying to think about something. You know, I, I think affordable housing for seniors is maybe one of the most difficult categories. We only have Culpeper Gardens, that's pretty much it in Arlington County. And that was built many years ago at this point. So this is a, a much bigger problem than one project. And, you know, we are talking about basically one unit here, which is one more unit than we'd have, but it is one unit for the base contribution. So I think it, I think it speaks to a greater contribution, a greater, sorry, conversation, not just about the ordinance, which Kedrick was referencing. And that's a very large conversation about the Affordable Housing Ordinance, because that requires Richmond approval. But I think it also speaks to our incentives for affordable senior housing. And that's also quite a large conversation because there's a lot of financing there. So I, I too would like to, to learn about any policies that Alexandria and Fairfax County may have. And I suspect maybe we might be getting that from housing staff at some point. But I, I'm happy to ultimately support this project because I think it does ultimately fulfill a lot of our housing goals. I'd like to see more density, but it's senior living. And I'm honestly satisfied by kind of the explanations the applicant has provided about the scale of the services that you are providing. It's, it's not the same as, as regular housing. It is, it's a care situation as well. And so for that reason, I'll be happy to support. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Striner.
I just want to associate myself with Commissioner Burkey on that.
Hate this mic. Sustainability. We've already touched on this, I think, in some of the other comments. Would anyone still like to be heard on this? I saw Commissioner Peterson first and then we'll go to Commissioner Bagley.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to say again that I really appreciate this building coming to us. I think this is going to be a great asset to the community. However, I was shocked at the score that C2E2 gave. One of the aspects of C2E2's presentations to us month after month is that they have a very consistent way of rating projects. And that gives us a way to kind of think about projects over time compared to one another. And 39 is very low. Usually we see projects coming in at 60, 65, and C2E2 will even say that's not acceptable. But at least we're seeing those consistently. This project does bring a lot to the community in a way that a lot of those other 60-point projects don't bring. But still, I think this is a rather alarming kind of existential problem, climate change that we're dealing with. And I think every building we really want to see working to, to, to overcome this challenge that we're seeing. And so I just, I'm going to have a motion to this effect later. But I just want to see, you know, what have you all talked about that could, could help, it would bring your score up a little bit more? Do you feel like this score is fair? And is there any low hanging fruit or, or not quite low hanging, but a little bit higher hanging fruit? That if, if the county or you were able to get a ladder, you could get a little bit more to raise that score up?
A, a couple of things. Thanks. Thanks for your comments, Commissioner Peterson. So, so a few things on that score, and I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because I wanted to talk about a couple of these things as well. I think to start with, you know, again, so kind of level set, the, the green building incentive program is typically one where bonus density is obtained, right? And normally the projects you see are coming forward with bonus density hitting the 0.25 or what have you for, for their bonus density. Again, that's not the case here. We're not moving forward with bonus density. And there is, you know, there was a statement in the C2E2 letter that we did not meet the standard site plan conditions. That is inaccurate. There is a site plan condition that is written specifically for projects not seeking bonus density. And we absolutely meet the constraints of that condition. Another inaccuracy in that letter was a statement that we did not reach 20% of performance improvement. That was in our initial program. We, we did not meet 20, but we moved it forward to meet that 20 later. So I think if we're going to be talking and even potentially making motions based on the report, we need to have the facts and have it actually be accurate. I know there's some other comments that other, that our sustainability experts want to make, but I did want to set the record straight on those two items first.
Right. And I, I guess I just did want to clarify. So the requirement per the site plan conditions for projects not meeting or not pursuing the green building incentive program is lead silver, which they are meeting. In addition, you know, there's other sustainability requirements like 10 years of energy reporting. There's the energy shower appliances and water systems fixtures. They're also providing, you know, EV charging was, which isn't required, but you know, they're kind of pursuing that as well. So, you know, from kind of our own policies perspective, you know, they are meeting the requirements, given that they aren't, you know, pursuing additional density.
But acknowledging that, that our requirements don't align with our community energy plans goals, unfortunately. Yeah. If I may ask a follow-up question. A lot of times when talking with buildings that are going to have restaurants, they'll say, we aren't using electric, heating and electric appliances because restaurants don't, they must, they insist that we have gas, but you all don't necessarily have that requirement of, of, you know, vendors. So is there a reason you're not using more electric appliances versus fossil fuel?
Yes, it's a, it's a great question. And, and we met with C2E2, had a long conversation with them about this. I think one of the challenges is our, our building type is really unique compared to, I believe, what you normally see which would be multifamily, which is kind of the intensity of our use. And that's really about who the residents are in our building, what our code requirements are and what our licensing requirement is. And we operate under what's called a defendant place, which means that our seniors are able to stay within the building, even if there is a emergency situation. And so what that leads us to is when we need all of our backup systems to be running, if there's an emergency, we need the most reliable system that there is available, which today continues to be gas. So as we look at different options, we find that the other ones are, are just simply not reliable enough. And so that leads us to make sure we have the most robust system to keep our residents safe.
Commissioner Bagley next, and then we'll go to Commissioner Sarley.
Yeah, I had the exact same question initially as Commissioner Peterson did. But are you looking, I mean, even if they're in an accurate report at 39, it's still a low number. You're going to get asked that at the county board if they speak again. So is there anything else in all of this that you've put together? And it has certainly improved since it started and congratulations to you for that. But it's still a low score. So is there nothing, no little something that perhaps you've overlooked that you could go back to and say, well, we can do this and try to improve it?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the thought. And I, and I think again, I think our use type is just a little bit different from what they're used to seeing, which is really the, the intensity of our use in terms of keeping our seniors safe. So I think it's, it's a little bit hard to compare the projects because this might be the only senior project that they've actually rated. I will say, we did start out at, at a lead certified level. We did push ourselves to get the lead silver. Initially, we didn't have any permeable pavers. We've introduced them ever we could. We've introduced green roofs to the project. We've introduced more trees to the parking lot. So we feel like we've, we've really accomplished a lot here to hit some, some of our sustainability goals.
I'm going to acknowledge Commissioner Sarley in a moment. I do want to announce that Commissioner Garen has joined us virtually. So she is now a member of the Planning Commission participating. Commissioner Sarley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having said all that, the resiliency of the building benefits quite significantly from a more environmentally or a more sustainable building, right? So higher insulation values, triple glazing on the glass, less glass, higher insulation on the roof. All that means, right, when you have to shelter in place or, 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 I forget the term used, right? It means that the building takes less energy to maintain. So again, I think, you know, notwithstanding the, the accuracies of all the sort of meeting the, the, the minimums and whatnot. I think as a building, like, and I'm a little out of my lane here, but like, it might be a little penny wise, pound foolish to not do a little bit more environmental building. Because I think on the long run, you know, it's a cheaper building to maintain. It's a cheaper, less energy being used every day. And when there's the resiliency situation where there's an emergency, you run less gas, you know, fossil fuels to heat or cool or whatever you might have. So that, that's it. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, I'm conscious of the clock. So Commissioner Striner will be our last one to make a short comment on this topic. And we are going to move on to our last topic before motions. Thank you.
And then, yeah, thank you. In terms of cost, I know that was one of the issues you'd mentioned. How thorough has the review been of a lot of the federal tax credits for things like heat pumps and solar, things of that nature? That Inflation Reduction Act, you know, just created all these opportunities. And so I'm wondering if, if this building type is even eligible for some of those, because those are residential. So I'm curious what, it's county too, first question for staff and the developer. How much has that avenue been explored?
For this one, I will have to turn to my design experts to see their feedback on the question.
Just any of the tax credits.
Just Scott Fleming Restoring Architecture, architect job.
Yeah.
Interalston Architect. You're talking about the various credits and all that. My experience, they've generally been on the retrofit side and on, and not as much on the new construction, but it's an excellent question and we will continue to study it.
Yeah, because I mean, it's, it's just not as expensive to do it anymore. That bill changed a lot of that game. So I think it's worth looking into.
The last topic we have before us is construction. Commissioner Bagley, would you like to recognize for that?
Yeah, I'm just curious. And I know you don't have to submit this until later, but what are you anticipating now in terms of, because Glebe Road is a crazy busy road. So construction wise, you're going to be going in what streets or, and I assume you're meeting with neighbors and stuff like that to make sure nobody feels really put out?
Yes, of course. As part of the standard site plan conditions, but of course, just as a normal practice, we'll be of course, meeting with our neighbors to present a construction management plan. At this stage, we have, you know, not hired a GC or, or to the building permit. So we don't have a construction plan at this point, but of course it'll be done in coordination with Arlington County staff and with the immediate neighbors and general neighborhood as well.
Thank you. Anything else for construction? Okay. I believe we are ready for a motion. I am going to look to Commissioner Sarley for said motion since you cheered the SPRC.
I actually do not have a motion ready to go. I will look to staff to see if we can put something up.
I believe one of the staff slides had the link. Yes, I believe that's coming for you shortly, Commissioner Sarley. Just bear with us. Thank you.
I did put on my report that I was going to check in to get the motion. So I apologize for not having done so.
Okay, I won't tell. I mean, this is recorded.
I just did.
And apparently posted on like 16 different channels, but no, moving on.
All right. Is this it? Thanks. Thanks for putting that up. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached ordinance to rezone the property known as 716 South Glebe Road, RPC number 23-028-016, dash 026, dash 027, dash 028, dash 030, and dash 031 from R6, one family dwelling district, and R5, one family and restricted to dwelling, two family dwelling district, to SD Special Development District.
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Peterson on the second. I believe we're ready to.
There may be another motion that would not be an amendment. Would that be appropriate after we vote on this one?
My intention, yes, I understand there may be some additional motions. I understand that those would be separate motions after the main motion. So we're going to move forward with this motion right now. Okay, great. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner, let me.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner me, aye. Okay, the motion. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Garen.
Aye.
But first, Garen.
Aye.
They called Garen first. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Weir?
Also said aye. Thank you.
Great. The motion carries nine to zero. Am I missing any other commissioners? Also, Commissioner Weir has joined us online. Okay, Commissioner Sarley, I believe. Okay, uh, Commissioner Sarley, I believe you have another motion.
Okay, so I will make the motion and then Commissioner Peterson will make her amended amendment?
I don't think this is an amendment to this motion. I think it's a standalone motion. Yeah, it's a standalone motion.
Okay. I recommend that the planning commission, um, I move that the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the attached ordinance for S P L N twenty two dash zero 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 seven, S P number four seventy three, to permit the construction of up to approximately one point zero six F A R total density for an assisted living facility, including approximately ninety six thousand two hundred and ninety one square feet of residential gross floor area, ninety nine units, with modifications for reduced residential parking ratio, front setback and other modifications necessary to achieve the proposed development, subject to the conditions of the attached ordinance.
I'll second.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Lynn Tommy. Uh, does anyone need to speak to the motion or already covered? Okay. So we will move to the vote. Uh, Commissioner Begley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tommy?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
That motion patches blah, 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 passes also nine to zero. Okay, now I understand we may have um at least one other motion to be made. Commissioner Peterson, you wish to recognize for a motion?
Yes, please. Um, I have a motion related to sustainability. I appreciate um the responses that the applicant has given us about some of the limitations to their ability to seek sustainable. And yet, um, I do think that we as a community need to keep working towards this effort. So my motion is I move the planning commission asks the county board to request staff and the applicant to continue to explore ways to increase the project's sustainability and resiliency.
Second.
Who wants it?
Jim can have it.
He can have it. I don't care.
All right, Commissioner Lynn Tommy, you seconded the last one. So I'm going to give this one to Commissioner Striner. Thank you. Um, Tenley, Commissioner Peterson, would you like to speak further to your motion? Sorry. Thank you. Um, we will vote on that motion now. Commissioner Begley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tommy?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner me?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes nine to zero. Um, I will actually make a motion now as well, um, borrowing in part from Commissioner Peterson's fine language. Um, I'm going to move that the planning commission asks the county board to request staff and applicant to continue to explore ways to add onsite affordable units to the project. Does anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sarley? Um, I don't, did anyone want to speak to that? I don't, I feel like I already made my case on that issue, so we'll let it sit with that. Okay. Um, we'll call the vote. Commissioner Begley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tommy?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Abstained.
Uh, Commissioner Steinberger, uh, votes yes. Um, so that would be motion passes, eight yeses, zero nos, one abstention. Um, okay, any other motions before us? Great, this item is done. Thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is the Historic and Cultural Resources Plan. This will be discussed by Cynthia LaChase Torres and Lauren Ferris.
When you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am Cynthia LaChase Torres. For those of you whom I haven't met yet, I am the manager of the Historic Preservation Program. And I have Lauren Ferris here with me, who is our principal preservation planner. Give us one second. So as we're pulling up our first slide here, uh, we're very excited to present the request to advertise for our recommended draft of the Updated Historic and Cultural Resources Plan, formerly known as the Historic Preservation Master Plan. The original plan, an element of the county's comprehensive plan, was adopted by the county board in two thousand and six. So this planning process that's now underway is the first official update to that plan. Here is a glance at the project timeline to date, as well as its major milestones. This planning process has been underway since spring of two thousand and twenty. We released an initial draft of the plan for public comment in mid April of this year. And concurrently, we led a robust public engagement period to seek feedback on that draft from April until June. We presented both versions of the plan to the Long Range Planning Committee, once in May and again in September. And we attended the Historical Affairs and Landmark Review Board twice, first in April and again last month. At its September public hearing, the H L R B unanimously recommended that the county board adopt the updated plan. After tonight's hearing, the request to advertise will be presented to the county board with consideration for adoption of the updated plan in November. One last note about process, a separate implementation framework document is also in progress. And this will be finalized with county leadership leading up to and following plan adoption. So before we could begin developing an updated plan, we first needed to better understand what our program had accomplished since the original two thousand and six plan. One of our most visible accomplishments was the installation of more than forty five historic markers all across the county. We conducted historic research and developed publications focusing on Arlington's cultural heritage. Our countywide architectural survey resulted in the documentation of more than nineteen thousand historic resources, which contributed to historic, historic neighborhoods and individual buildings being listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The Historic Resources Inventory, or H R I, was the leading recommendation of the original plan. The county board adopted the H R I in two thousand and eleven. We also updated the historic preservation sections of the zoning ordinance three times. Some other big wins involved the designation of thirteen local historic districts, the recordation of ten historic preservation easements, which are both our strongest tools to protect our uh physical history. All these accomplishments helped us incorporate preservation more holistically into county planning studies and helped us build our internal partnerships. However, since adoption of the original plan, the field of historic preservation has evolved and shifted. National reflection is still underway about who the field has served and how the practice of historic preservation could be made more inclusive. And here in Arlington, our program broadened its reach beyond just historic buildings to recognize human stories and diverse cultures in our community. We also realized the need to study how historic preservation is integrated and balanced with other county policies and priorities. Another ongoing challenge has been a lack of sufficient programmatic resources, both in terms of funding to undertake major projects, as well as our small team's bandwidth to complete additional work items. In recent years especially, emergent issues arose that required our immediate attention and often long shifts away from our program priorities. We even had to take a multi-month hiatus from this planning process at one point. All of this reflection allowed us to determine areas for improvement, many of which are addressed by the goals and recommendations in the updated plan. So the Updated Historic and Cultural Resources Plan lays a new foundation for building on the past successes of our program while embracing new opportunities and priorities. It celebrates both architectural history and cultural heritage by connecting physical historic buildings and places with the people, stories and traditions that shape and define Arlington. We are especially proud of our approach to equity and accessibility. We were fortunate that our planning process began shortly after the county board adopted an equity resolution in September of two thousand and nineteen that identifies racial equity as a countywide priority. This formal commitment to enhance equity and access for all residents helped guide our updated plan. The plan encourages the exploration of new creative historic preservation planning tools that will allow more flexibility in how the Arlington community can practice preservation. Another key aspect of the plan is the emphasis on partnership building, both within and across county departments and with the community at large, to advance our education and outreach mission. The plan likewise aims to intentionally connect and balance historic preservation with other county priorities, including affordable housing, green space and tree preservation, energy efficiency and racial equity work. Lastly, our plan identifies gaps in the services provided by the Historic Preservation Program. Over the long term, as these needs and the specific areas of archaeology, cultural heritage work and archival management are addressed, Arlington will be better positioned to improve and advance the impacts of our preservation practice. As I mentioned, the updated plan has a very strong emphasis on fostering equity and inclusion in all of our work. This includes increasing access to our services, especially to those who have not traditionally been served and to those whose stories have not yet been included in our historical narrative. We are excited about the equity aspirations that are included in each goal of the plan to describe how these achievements could advance inclusion, diversity, equity and/or accessibility. We also wanted to use language that is inclusive, enables all residents to see themselves in this document, language that puts people and their identities first and that demonstrates everyone who lives in Arlington is part of its story. For example, we saw the use of master in the original title as problematic language and wanted to avoid any suggestion that this term refers to a feature that is superior or directive. This new title of the Historic and Cultural Resources Plan is more inclusive and fully captures the breadth of our program's work. So and here are the five focus areas that comprise the main goals of the recommended draft. Community engagement, incentives for preservation, partnerships, regulations and technology information and tools. So I'll hit a few highlights of each of these. The focus area of community engagement has two fundamental goals, to increase understanding of and support for county history in general, as well as its people and its places. We will do this by celebrating diversity of people and place and doing more proactive outreach on a consistent basis. Recommendations include hosting four outreach events each year, creating an annual report to track our successes and losses, and expanding our program's digital newsletter. We are also eager to connect with constituents and groups who have not participated in our activities before. For incentives, we simply want to provide more incentives to residents, property owners and developers to encourage more preservation. To help achieve this goal, we want to recognize those who are already preserving Arlington's history, like owners of local historic districts and preservation easements. Examples of financial incentives could include growing and sustaining the new Historic Preservation Fund and establishing new tools like local preservation tax credits or tax abatement programs. We also want to consider how to offer more flexible preservation zoning standards to historic buildings that are undergoing rehabilitation or adaptive reuse. We believe that by being able to offer more flexible preservation incentives, that preservation will become more equitable while still providing a balance with other county policies. For our partnerships goal, our ongoing efforts to safeguard Arlington's history and heritage will benefit from increased collaborations with other county departments, as well as with the community. To succeed, we need to better define how preservation is included with other county planning efforts and processes. This will help make preservation both more proactive and consistent. We likewise want to build on current relationships with priority county initiatives, especially those that complement historic preservation well, including affordable housing, sustainability and energy efficiency, and the natural environment and landscapes. And lastly, we hope to use expanded partnerships to address cultural landscapes in the county, including historic cemeteries and burial grounds and within county parks and other public spaces. Another key focus area deals with preservation regulations, both improving our existing tools and processes and considering new tools. Much of the public feedback that we have received underscored a community desire for more flexibility in how Arlington preserves historic places. Since the nineteen seventies, local historic designation has protected a variety of significant historic resources countywide. During recent years, however, there have been a few high profile designation requests that resulted in demolition instead of protection. We saw this as an opportunity to study the designation process and consider ways to improve it. Additionally, the updated plan recommends pursuing the creation of new preservation tools that could honor both architectural and/or cultural importance. Such tools, like neighborhood heritage districts and micro districts, could provide more flexibility in preserving important aspects of historic character like massing, scale, height and setbacks. New tools like this could help protect smaller collections of resources, such as a block or a portion of a neighborhood or a commercial area. Within, within the theme of diversity and inclusion, the plan encourages the preservation of those resources that are at high risk of loss and those that represent underrepresented histories. Another major recommendation in this category is establishing an archaeology program for the county. This would include adopting an archaeology ordinance, creating an archaeology plan to guide not only our county held collections, but also to provide expertise, and developing a standard review process for archaeological projects on county land. And lastly, the focus area for technology information and tools has two priorities, one for the H R I and another for our general preservation information systems. The H R I has helped staff prioritize and advocate for the protection and/or reuse of specific types of historic buildings. We've been using this planning tool now for more than a decade, and there's definitely room for improvement. Examples include making corrections to the first phase of the H R I with historic garden apartments, shopping centers and commercial buildings, creating clearer policy requirements for H R I ranked properties, improving how others access and use the H R I as a tool, and expanding the H R I into a second phase and studying new historic resource types, such as county owned buildings, modern architecture and institutional buildings like community centers, schools and churches. The other main recommendation in the technology focus area involves improving and expanding our general preservation information systems and conducting additional architectural and cultural surveys and studies. In terms of managing our data better, we want to make more information user friendly and available to the public for research purposes. The plan recommends a more formalized approach to managing historic records countywide through a suggested new archival records program. We also need to study ongoing risks to historic properties like climate change and development pressure, and then incorporate that data into our existing information systems. Since our planning process began in the spring of two thousand and twenty, public engagement has been a critical component of our decision-making process. We reached new audiences, as well as collected internal and external feedback in a variety of both virtual and in-person engagement methods. Overwhelmingly, the feedback we received was positive. Several major themes emerged, such as, there is support for an archaeology program, there are concerns about demolitions of historic resources, appreciation for the proposed equity aspirations, advocates for an update to the H R I, a desire for more history programming and technical assistance, increasing preservation incentives, studying the local designation process, building partnerships and utilizing the plan as an educational tool for place making. So we spent the spring and summer analyzing feedback on the initial draft and making minor revisions to the document. These changes are reflected in the recommended draft that was released in mid-August. So here's a quick summary of what's different. We updated the icon used in our segment of the comprehensive plan's color wheel. We chose a different icon to better reflect the broader scope of our, of our program's work. This updated, updated icon references architecture, historic interpretation, as well as archaeology. We added locations of historic resources and neighborhood reference points throughout the plan, as suggested by the L R P C. We also strengthened the connection between the historic built environment and the natural environment by adding references to biophilia. Lastly, we made several clarifications throughout the plan, such as providing more context to the statement of historical and cultural significance, recognizing county uh transportation projects as a potential partnership opportunity. recognizing county transportation projects as a potential partnership opportunity, and explaining the size of the proposed neighborhood heritage districts in the regulation goal. So in conclusion, we are asking the Planning Commission to recommend that the County Board authorize advertisement for public hearings by the Planning Commission on October 30th and the County Board on November 11th to consider this update of the Historic and Cultural Resources Plan. And now we would be happy to address any questions that the Commission has.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, Ms. McIntyre will be speaking.
Ms. McIntyre, the floor is yours. No, no, not Ms. McIntyre. I'm sorry, you're Joan Lawrence. Never mind. You're not speaking on this item. You're speaking on the next one.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Okay, never mind.
Yeah, go ahead, Joan. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Joan is speaking. Okay, that's where I got confused. Never mind. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Joan Lawrence, representing the Historical Affairs and Landmark Review Board. And I just, I'm sure you all received copies of Chair Omari Davis's letter, but he indicated that the HLRB endorsed the recommended draft of the Historic and Cultural Resources Plan and also supported the multi-year process that the staff went through to update the original 2006 Historic Preservation Master Plan. And we commend the Historic Preservation Program staff for all of their hard work that led to the document that you are considering advertising tonight. The HLRB, in addition, strongly supports this recommended draft plan. Just a couple of comments that I'd like to make about it. While the development pressures that produced the original 2006 plan are still present, there are also some additional factors, which I think Cynthia described very well, that we have to consider if Arlington is to preserve for the future not only its historic resources, but also more broadly cultural resources. And then again, there's the question of balancing the county's current priorities on equity, accessibility, inclusivity, affordable housing, economic justice, and environmental and energy interests. This should provide a unique opportunity going forward to expand historic preservation services to individuals and communities who have not in the past been traditionally served or involved. And of course, getting more people involved is something that is extremely important. The plan that you are considering to preserve Arlington's historic and cultural resources focuses on people as well as the built environment. And the topic areas in this plan are directed to specific topics and focus areas that will update and approve, and improve rather, our approach to preservation. The HLRB is hopeful that specific portions of the plan, for example, the regulations focus area, will be given the attention required to develop a regulatory approach that will expand preservation of county historic and cultural resources, in particular, ensure that significant historic and cultural resources remain a part of the community. The HLRB is also hopeful that the clear, creative, and inclusive approach to historic preservation represented by the plan will be supported by the resources needed for the Historic Preservation Program staff to implement it. The recommended draft plan has a great conclusion, and I just want to point out a couple of things that were said in it. Based on all of the community input, and there was a great deal of it in this case, and the staff, I think, did an incredible job reaching out to large numbers of different groups of people. Arlington clearly values its architectural and cultural heritage and supports community engagement on this topic through educational activities, incentives for preservation that are offered to everyone, strong partnerships, effective and clear regulations, and better technical tools. And of course, all of these are part of this plan. These goals will enhance Arlington's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion by encouraging Arlingtonians of all economic and ethnic backgrounds to carry out historic preservation within our collective community. The HLRB supports adoption of the request to advertise and recommendation of the County Board that the plan be advertised. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, did any commissions, transportation, did you? Nope. Anybody else here? Nope. Okay, the matter is with the commission. From a topic area standpoint, does anyone have any general topics they wanted to put on an agenda for this? Okay, I'm good.
I'm not sure how I would, I have some thoughts. I'm not sure how I would preface them under a category. Maybe process might be a question.
Okay.
For me.
Um, well, in lieu of having a set list of topics, I'm thinking we do a round robin on this instead, so that each commissioner can give their thoughts and they don't have to fit them into a category. Also, it's after 8:30, so why not? Um, so we will start with Commissioner Bagley, because you spoke up. So there you go.
First, I want to compliment staff. I know you don't have enough help, and it's amazing what you produce. And I am a recipient of the 2,000 plan efforts when Michael Leventhal, your predecessor, came and sent a letter to my little neighborhood saying, "Oh, by the way, we think we should make you an honorific historic district." So I live in an honorific historic district, and I have taken advantage of the preservation tax credits. I will say, in that time, which was 2007, there's only a couple of us that still remain in the neighborhood, and most are absentee owners and their investment properties. So very few people still know about that credit, so I feel like I'm the older one, the ambassador, to go around and say. So I would say an opportunity for staff to maybe engage volunteers to maybe do some follow-up to those places, because that was a pretty ambitious project, if I remember back in 2007. He did a whole bunch of neighborhoods. Also, I asked you in the last LRPC if you felt, as we look back at, was the Fahy Lothrup House?
Yes.
If you felt this gave you more teeth moving forward, because we struggle when we see developments come in, and there's any sort of aspect of historic there. We struggle with getting any recognition other than maybe a plaque, or they move some of the little pieces of something and they put something in there. So I'm wondering, though, you felt that this will give you more teeth, but this comes in, you know, you get more involved when the 4.1 comes in. In terms of Lahy Lothrup, that would have been too late. So I guess my question is, is this new plan, or will it be continued to be refined? And maybe, again, reach out to volunteers who are interested, or their historic society, I don't know who. Where you can approach people that maybe, and I know that was a rare property, but to go back, and I think in my own neighborhood, because they're row houses, you know, to have one tear it down probably is not going to happen. However, in the sector plan, if you look at it, it calls for all of them to be, you know, higher density. So I guess my question is, moving forward, is there a way or a plan, or if you had your wish lists and you had all your little magic wands, that we could get to these places a little bit earlier with all these programs and credits and incentives that even in my own little neighborhood, which is super small and not a lot, but I took advantage of that program and another neighbor did, and we saved a lot of money, and we did it the right way, and the house will be there for, you know, a long time to come. So hopefully, you kind of gleaned what I'm looking for there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Those were some excellent points that you made. These are in no particular order. But in response to your question about being able to educate the public more, whether it's about tax credits or the benefits of designation and protection, that is definitely something that the plan, the updated plan, does support. Being able to do more proactive instead of reactive outreach is key to what we want to accomplish, as well as doing that consistently and being able to work directly with neighborhood associations and property owners to address questions. In terms of the unfortunate loss of the Febride Lothrup property within the past few years and a couple other higher-profile historic resources, as unfortunate as those circumstances were to play out, and there were definitely losses of irreplaceable historic fabric and heritage, I think the fact that those unfortunate losses happened during our planning process allowed us to take a step back and really look at how our designation processes are working and if there are indeed areas for improvement. And I think some of the recommendations that are presented in the updated plan will allow us to do that and allow us to create some additional tools that don't exist now that might be able to help us preserve different types of resources. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, and I will continue to support your great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. You are recognized.
Sorry, I was just trying to make sure I was like paying attention at the right time. So I would like to appreciate staff's work and effort on this, and I think the way I think about this is sort of like when Marty from Back to the Future starts to fade from the photo. That's where historic preservation comes in, right? It keeps that photo a little bit vivid and sharp, and we don't fade. And I think architecturally speaking, a lot of the character, and I think it was Senator Gillibrand back in 2015 that mentioned that Arlington was a bit of a soulless place. And yes, we did take offense at that. But I think, you know, it's sort of, it's sort of these preservations, these are not just gratuitous preservation of historic thing, but this is the fabric, right? This is the identity. This is the personality and who Arlington is. And so I think this is not an insignificant document and an insignificant effort, and I really appreciate staff working on this, and particularly creating something that has a bit more teeth, to quote my fellow commissioner, so that we can continue to preserve the identity, right? We see all these shiny new buildings come through. I guess I'm speaking mostly to architecture, and they're all great, you know, but they have a sort of universal, this is the problem, right, that we're having now. Design is sort of universalized, not in the sort of universal design way, but in the sort of generic, happens-everywhere way. And I think preservation is exactly the medicine, you know, to help preserve the identity of Arlington County and its uniqueness. So thank you very much, and I strongly support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarley. I will recognize myself now. I will associate myself with Commissioner Sarley's comments. I do think that, you know, where we have the uniqueness and what we, you know, the history of Arlington is tied up in the buildings that we preserve and what our community has evolved from, and the story that we tell all comes from the architecture and what we have left. And so, you know, there have been a few unfortunate high-profile losses in that regard over the past few years. But I very much appreciate what staff is saying with regards to using that as a learning opportunity and really kind of to make sure that the plan we're putting forth addresses those scenarios. And I think having, I was very encouraged that, you know, with the plan and the range of incentives and how we can sort of incentivize preservation and looking at more ways that we can address opportunities for that in a creative way to, you know, have an end result that is hopefully different than, you know, what we saw in some of those instances over the past couple of years. So I'm very encouraged by that. I'm excited about the archaeological aspect of the plan. That's something that I think is very cool. And for those who don't know, prior to this illustrious body, I was on HLRB, and I always got really excited when we would like excavate, or they were going to be like digging something and seeing like what we would find. I don't know if we ever found anything like really cool, but I always kind of like had hopes that like we would. So maybe now we will. So thank you. I'm very excited to support this.
You can wait your turn. I don't know how you, yeah, I'm glad I didn't have to follow Commissioner Sarley's reference to Marty McFly. I, yeah, I definitely want to associate myself with the appreciation for your work on this plan. It definitely seems like a labor of love. I want to say I really appreciate that you are working, that staff is working with the Jire Lynch on Barcroft Apartments as far as historic preservation. I think that's fantastic. That's definitely what we should be doing. That's a wonderful opportunity. I remember when APA went through that process a number of years ago now in Fisher House. And I, so I was doing a little homework, and they got almost $5 million in federal and state historic tax credits, which was huge, was a huge source of funding for that project. And so really excited to see us continue to lean into that direction. Would love to see that as an opportunity on Barcroft and other projects to do more infill, to preserve what we have. In that spirit, so there's language in the draft here that talks about incentivizing that. Are you all, maybe this is part of implementation, will you all be working with housing staff to think about further ways to like institutionalize those incentives for maybe property owners to do more historic preservation?
That's, that's a great question. Thank you for your comments. That's something that we do on a daily basis now, coordinating with our, with our housing as well as our planning colleagues. And so I think the plan, especially with the more flexible tools and things that we would like to propose, as well as building our partnerships, both, you know, with the community but also our colleagues. I have, I have a, I believe that we're going to be able to expand our efforts in that area, especially with affordable housing, because traditionally, much of the historic multifamily housing stock was built as affordable housing. So to be able to keep that connection and adapt these, these important historic buildings for modern use is, is very, it's a very doable activity that we support.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, we, of course, had two LRPCs for this, and both of those were very productive, good meetings. The first one, we made quite a number of suggestions, which pretty much showed up at the second one, so thank you very much for that. We did spend a lot of time, I think, as Commissioner Bagley noted, about how, how do, how do people recommend things get on the register, on the inventory? So that was a very productive conversation. We also spent a lot of time going through the frustrations the Planning Commission has had in the past, dealing with properties that came up that had historic buildings on them and were being moved around. You know, like, how do we want to deal with those? The garage was one of them that came up. And a lot of those, of course, came, started going through the process before the HR was really established. So we, our hands were tied, but I think the new plan now will give us way more guidance on how to deal with those type of situations when they come before us. I'm very gratified by the incentives that are going to be explored for that property owners will want this, rather than see it as an impediment to them developing their properties. And the recognition that something that's historic should have a place in Arlington and a living thing going forward, rather than just something preserved in amber. So, you know, all around, I'm very, very supportive of this, and I very much thank you coming before the LRPC, and I thought, like I said, we had really very good discussions on this. The consensus was definitely to move forward with it, and I will, of course, have motions at the end for this, the motion at the end. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you. I will try to be brief in the interest of time. Thank you for your presentation. I enjoyed it very much. A lot of what we do here as a commission is looking for consensus between organizations that are talking about different projects. So within different departments that are probably often siloed in the government, you know, how, how well do you all feel like you work with different departments and comprehensive plan elements to try to build consensus, to make your work even more powerful? For example, Forestry and Natural Resources will be presenting their plan. Are there historic trees, historic flora and fauna that you feel like, well, if we work together with this other department, we'll be even stronger to try to protect the elements that we care about?
That's a great question. I was jotting down some notes for that. So yes, that's something that we do do currently, and I think we're light years ahead of where we were when the original plan was adopted in 2006. We were just starting to build some of those internal bridges and working across the different departments outside of CPHD. And I think a few examples immediately come to mind. Definitely Department of Parks and Recreation, there are several historic parks and important historical and cultural landscapes, like the Civil War forts as an example, that are protected local historic districts. So we already have that natural partnership of being stewards together. We also work with Urban Forestry on dealing with trees. We also work with Urban Forestry on dealing with trees, especially mature trees in many of our local historic districts. And so they've always been a source of guidance for us. So I see that partnership continuing. We also work very closely with the Department of Environmental Services, more so on the county facility building maintenance side of things. But I think there's new opportunities to work with our transportation colleagues, as well as with our Real Estate Bureau colleagues and even our stormwater and infrastructure. So there's, there's many opportunities there to, to continue to work on our internal relationships. And I would also say with Arlington Economic Development, with the Cultural Affairs Division and Public Art, they've been one of our strongest partners since the beginning of our program. And I see that as another important partnership that's only going to continue into the future. So we've done a lot, but there's of course more to do. And so I think this, this plan will allow us to continue to, to build those relationships.
Yeah, so I strongly support this as well. I think, you know, every time you walk around Arlington, every street is like a page out of a storybook and you get little pieces. You look at the architecture, you say, okay, so that was from like the 40s and oh, that's from the 60s. And so you really get a piece of that. So I'm glad that preserving this has more teeth, it's more institutionalized. I think it's important. I also think it's important that in a time where many local governments are shying away from the uncomfortable parts of our history, we all live in a place that embraces those tough conversations and works to rectify and make sure that everybody's included in those stories from the indigenous tribes that were here, you know, for millennia to the current day. I think that's super important to look at this, to look at all of our history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So I'm really in favor of this.
We have a cover, blah, blah, blah. We have a couple commissioners participating virtually. Commissioner Garen, and then I'll recognize Commissioner Weir for the round robin. Commissioner Garen?
Um, thank you. I'm having trouble with my camera, but I, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I also attended the LRPC meetings. This plan is lovely and has come a long way. I really, staff has done a terrific job incorporating comments and just making a really lovely plan that is really forward-thinking and visionary. I want especially second Commissioner Peterson's comments about looking for consistency between our plans. And I know that we talked a little bit about that, both with you on this and then, of course, with Forestry and Natural Resources. So to the extent that we keep looking for those opportunities and taking advantage of them, I, I, you know, I, I hope we can do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Weir, would you like to be recognized?
I have nothing to add to what's been said so far. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that covers our comment from the dais and virtually. I believe we are ready for a motion, which I think I have ready, so unless. Oh, do you have a motion? Oh, never mind. Commissioner Lynn Tellme will make the motion. I stand corrected, apologies.
Yeah, I move that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution, attachment A, to authorize advertisement for public hearings by the planning commission at its October 30th, 2023 meeting and the Arlington County Board at its November 11th, 2023 meeting for consideration of the update of the Historic Cultural Resources Plan, attachment B.
I will second. Any further, any further discussion? Okay, then we will move to a vote. Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Berkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Seimberger?
Aye.
That is, the motion passes nine to zero. Thank you very much. You are free to go. We're not free to go, but y'all are free to go. Madam Clerk, if you would call the next item when you're ready. Thank you.
Our next item is the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. Ryan Delaney will discuss this item with the commission this evening.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hit the button again, Ryan, please. There you go.
I apologize. Just need to join the meeting virtually so I can bring the slides up. Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Ryan Delaney, planner with DPR and the project manager for the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan update. I'm joined tonight by Vincent Furway, our urban forest manager, and Irina Lazick, our long-range planning section supervisor, as well as virtually by Jennifer Fioretti, our deputy director for DPR. And I'm here to present a short summary of the plan, our process, next steps between now and the end of the year as we begin our request to advertise. I appreciate you all making the time for, for us in what sounds like a busy week, so I'll try to keep the presentation succinct as possible. So I would like to start with a short overview of the document and how it fits into the county planning portfolio. So the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, or the FNRP, is a new element of the county's comprehensive plan and will serve as the guiding document for Arlington's policies for integrated natural resource and urban forest management across the county. It updates and replaces both the Urban Forest Master Plan and the Natural Resources Management Plan, both of which were sub-elements of the Public Spaces Master Plan and dealt primarily with public property. For the first time, from a planning perspective at least, we're looking at all of our natural resources as an interconnected system that covers not just the natural areas that the county manages, but also the built environment and private property as well. And so the plan was designed to reflect and to reflect this and really highlight those interconnections across policy areas that are covered by this document, as well as, as well as other elements of the comprehensive plan and other county plans and programs. In terms of our timeline, we're on the right side of the graphic on, on the screen here, just at the beginning of our request to advertise process. We published the latest version of the draft on the project website late last week, and we'll be bringing the RTA to the county board on October 14th. We're planning to bring the plan forward for consideration of adoption in December of this year. We wanted to have a generous RTA window to allow us to digest any feedback we receive and to make any final refinements to the plan before bringing it forward to be considered for adoption. Transitioning briefly to how we developed the plan, kicking off in 2020, the planning process has included. Oh, thank you. Sorry, first time in the room. So kicking off in 2020, the planning process has included an interdepartmental core team with members from multiple divisions of DPR, as well as DES, CPHD, AED, and APS, all contributing to the development of the document. The process has also been supported by the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group, whose members you see here on the slide, a county manager-appointed committee consisting of representatives from the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, the Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission, with whom we've met regularly. And I'd like to pause for a moment and thank Caroline Haynes and Phil Klingelhofer, as well as the rest of the advisory group, including Commissioner McIntyre in the room this evening, for their time and energy in helping us develop the plan. This process also included benchmarking research to learn more about current practices, innovative programs and conservation measures, and lessons learned from our peer jurisdictions. Those communities included Fairfax, Albemarle, and Prince William Counties in Virginia, Montgomery County in Maryland, and the cities of Seattle, Washington, and Richmond, Virginia. We also drew on some additional examples from some of our PSMP, the Public Spaces Master Plan, benchmarking communities like Bellevue, Washington, among others. And last but definitely not least, the plan has been shaped by three rounds of public engagement, starting before the first draft was written, that created opportunities for Arlingtonians to learn more about our environment and influence how we plan for its future. So the outreach methods across these three engagements included online comment forums, educational materials, including videos, infographics, and physical signage, bilingual pop-up events across the county, virtual public meetings, and in-person open house, as well as multiple commission and committee briefings. Overall, they generated over 5,000 comments that helped us create and then refine the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan. And we've addressed a great many comments and made a lot of significant changes to the draft throughout this document. You know, gestation, a few themes emerged out of our last round of engagement that I want to touch on, including a general support for the plan and its recommendations. You know, most folks felt through this process, we've been responsive to their comments. Some lingering concerns on the last edition of the draft, that the tone of the plan is not urgent enough, especially regarding climate change and tree canopy decline. A desire for more specific metrics and implementation details, and feedback that existing efforts at volunteer groups and especially our ongoing tier management project be included in the document in more detail. We believe that the edits we've made this summer and fall largely have addressed these comments, but I did want to share that short snapshot of what we learned the last time the draft was out for review as we move into the RTA, just for your awareness. So with that, I'll move on to a summary of the plan itself. And as I mentioned earlier, the FNRP is a combined update to the Urban Forest Master Plan and Natural Resources Management Plan. We tried to go beyond just combining these elements into a single document and really tried to develop an integrative perspective on environmental planning that emphasizes equity, a community-wide approach based on education and volunteerism, and a focus on reconnecting nature to daily life. The elements you see here on, on this slide are the connective tissue of the plan, knitting together the plan's technical recommendations, and acknowledging how intersectional issues like tree canopy, ecology, and climate really are. In that way, the FNRP follows from the county's Equity and Biophilic Cities resolutions and focuses on breaking down the artificial distinction between nature and the built environment, on creating more space for natural elements alongside us and ensuring that the benefits of these resources are equitably available, regardless of people's backgrounds or where in the county they live. And we believe this approach is critical not just to the conservation of our natural resources, but also to climate mitigation and ultimately quality of life in the county. So moving into the plan's recommendations, and I'm sorry if this is a review for some of you all. This slide here highlights our strategic directions. The SDs are the broad policy areas that create a framework for the plan's guidance. The structure and the general intent of these has not changed too much since the plan's inception, but they've all been refined several times and are stronger for it. For each of the strategic direction, the plan prescribes actions that the county should take to implement that overarching policy goal. And finally, each action is implemented through action steps, the smaller, more operational tasks that the county can take to move the policy forward. The structure mirrors the Public Space Master Plan, so hopefully is at least somewhat familiar to folks. And in the current draft, there are 84 individual action steps. And though the strategic directions are the core of the plan, they're introduced by our executive summary, introduction, and planning context, and supported by appendices that include additional information on the benefits of nature, a short history on race and housing in Arlington and how that intersects with tree canopy and green space, progress tracking on our previous plans, the Urban Forest Master Plan and Natural Resources Management Plan, and a snapshot of some of Arlington's nonprofit and volunteer environmental organizations that help do this work on the ground. The plan does include an implementation framework as well. Each of those 84 recommendations in the plan is included in the table, along with some high-level details about proposed timing, responsible parties, potential partners, potential funding sources, and planning level cost estimates. And this follows a similar format to what you may have seen in the PSMP or the Pentagon City Sector Plan most recently. And then the last aspect of the document that I really wanted to touch on this evening are the priority actions. At the top of the draft, right after our executive summary, 10 of the plan's recommendations are highlighted as high priority. And these were selected to emphasize the major changes that the FNRP recommends over our current policy, highlight our equity recommendations, elevate actions that staff felt would be most impactful, and reflect what we learned through, what we learned about community priorities through our, our rounds of public engagement. So in the interest of preserving some of your all's discussion time, I won't read them at you, but I do want to pause here just so you all could take them in, and happy to come back to this slide during the discussion if it would be useful. Okay. And moving into logistics, you know, hopefully that was a bit of a window into the plan's development process and helps you all understand not only what's in our current draft, but also how we got there. And so in terms of next steps, you know, we've, as I said, we've just kicked off our RTA period with you all tonight. We'll be visiting the county board on the 14th. And we will be kicking off another round of commission briefings in October and November to bring everybody up to speed and offer a final opportunity for input and discussion. And we are planning to bring the plan forward for consideration of adoption in December, should the RTA be approved. And with that, pause here on the staff recommendation, but happy to yield the rest of my time back to you all for questions or discussion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a couple of public speakers on this, one in person and one virtual?
So we'll have Joan McIntyre to speak first. And then after Ms. McIntyre, we'll have Caroline Haynes representing the Urban Forestry Commission.
Okay. Ms. McIntyre, when you're ready.
Good evening again. I'm Joan McIntyre, speaking for the Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission. C2E2 commends the staff for producing a comprehensive draft Forestry and Natural Resources Plan that offers a clear vision with strategic directions and actions, and recognizes the importance of our tree canopy and natural resources as natural capital that requires dedicated investments to provide a host of environment, health, and economic benefits. We greatly appreciate the extensive public engagement during the process and responsiveness to comments resulting in a stronger plan. Our major concern is the plan lacks sufficient metrics associated with key strategic directions. Indicators such as tree canopy coverage by neighborhood, progress on reducing invasive species, improvement of water quality, and diversity of flora and fauna would facilitate tracking impact in the plan and the, and the health of our natural resources. In addition, the implementation plan does not provide a sufficient framework to track progress. A regular reporting schedule should be identified with progress reports going beyond brief statements of status to offer description of what has been accomplished to date and what is planned for future, along with updates on the track metrics. This more detailed reporting would help shed light on how broad action items, such for example is 4.6.2, that identifies the number of potential actions such as reducing light pollution and phasing out gas-powered equipment are being addressed. We support prioritizing incentives and zoning changes to increase the preservation and planting of canopy trees, but recommend additional granularity and optimizing canopy, given the different types of land and ownerships and varying neighborhood needs. The county should also explore offering technical assistance and incentive programs for installing conservation landscape, tree care, and removal of invasives on private property. C2E2 also recommends that treating invasive plants and reducing deer numbers be included in the plan's priorities as addressing these pervasive problems are critical to restoring our natural resources. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we're going to Caroline Haynes virtually. Ms. Haynes?
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. Yes, my name is Caroline Haynes. I'm speaking as Commissioner to the Forestry and Natural Resource Commission and as Chair of the Natural Resources Joint Advisory Group. And as Ryan had mentioned, the plan started in 2020, but we started in Energig years ago, sort of doing deep dives on very specific issues. And it's been a very collaborative process with the staff in working a lot of those issues into this plan. And, you know, grateful for that. I'm grateful for Joan's participation. And we, we were fortunate to have the chairs of each of the member commissions, the Energig member commission. So it was Joan McIntyre's Chair of C2E2 and Shruti Gupta with Park and Rec, and Phil Klingelhofer with Forestry and Natural Resource Commission. And that was great as far as being able to. And that was great as far as being able to really get a broad scope on some of these issues that we were looking at. Just want to emphasize a couple of the recurring themes, I think, that we have heard, and I likely will continue to hear in this, is that this is a pretty solid plan, but that there's a real urgency in taking action, and that we don't have a lot of time to dally. And, you know, we're just got that message loud and clear, and that there are the 10 priorities that have sort of risen to the top, but all of those 84 recommendations are really important and will need to be moving in parallel. And, you know, I get it, not everything can be a priority. So that is why there are the 10 that were highlighted, but there's an awful lot of good material in this plan that needs to be done. Another thing I would emphasize is the public-private and volunteer action working together. This is no longer just, this is what the county's going to do on county land, but that we really need to have this collective action. And I think this plan addresses that well, much better than, I think, the previous two, the Urban Forest Plan and the Natural Resources Management Plan that we had previously. So I think that's a huge step forward. There's also a lot of overlapping issues with the other comprehensive plans, and just mentioned with the one that you all just adopted to move forward on the RTA, the Historic and Cultural Affairs. And we did have some conversations with them as well on some of the biophilic elements and different ways of preserving historic trees and that kind of thing. So I think there's just, I kind of feel like we're past the time where we can do sort of those stove piping, and we really need to be very comprehensive. A comprehensive plan really does need to speak to the elements, really need to speak to each other. And I think this plan does a pretty good job of that as well. Another thing we focused on was just sort of overall the availability, quality, and equitable access to nature and public spaces, and that we've got to be very serious about that, and not just, you know, I think Ryan has focused well on some of those issues in the plan as looking for opportunities in some of those areas, especially have the lower tree canopy. And we know it's not just one or two solutions, but it's really going to be a combination of a lot of these recommendations that need to be enacted to make that happen over the long haul. And then I would also echo some of the things that Joan just said about the measurable results. And I think we will be looking forward to that annual reporting of progress, and not just, you know, kind of yes-no thing, but really where are we on this? And that will give us some guidelines as to how to move forward and to make sure that we really are making some progress. And the last thing I just wanted, and we talked a little bit about this in LRPC, but there's a number of items that really do go into different departments, and it really crosses many different departmental jurisdictions. In particular, I think some of the ones that felt very urgent in this process too was sort of in the CPHD area of updating the standard site plan conditions, so that it's, when we talk about biophilic design and building nature into the built environment, it's not the last thing on the site plan process, but that it could be brought up into the beginning planning stages, so that developers know that this is part of what we're asking everyone to contribute to the county, and not just, you know, a few landscaping items at the end. Likewise, lot coverage, it's came up a lot during our missing metal discussion, and expanded housing options. And regardless of whether it's for a single-family home or whether it's for a multifamily home, if there's no room to plant trees, we're never going to reach that 40% tree canopy. And we've got to be able to do that. The last time lot coverage was looked at was in 2005. We had Susan Bell come and talk to us at Enerjag and talk about that process when she was the Director of CPHD, and tree canopy was never mentioned during that discussion. So I think it's a really important discussion that we have now, and as planning commissioners, you know, I hope it'll be high priority for you all as well.
Ms. Haynes, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
I am right now. So we strongly support moving forward with this request to advertise, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thanks so much.
Wonderful. Thank you. I think there was some confusion on whether that was a time-limited or not speech, but we do appreciate the good feedback, Ms. Haynes. So, thank you. Okay, I believe there's no other public speakers. And Transportation did not hear this item. Did anybody hear it from any other perspective? Any, is there a report on this for us? No? I don't think so. No? Okay.
Not a formal report, but as was mentioned, this was before the LRPC twice last year, and then this year. Again, both conversations were very good. The overall thing, I think, that we saw, the latest one was to encourage, when we heard that there were other comments, to make it more urgent. We endorse that. So we think it's definitely moving in the right direction. The whole concept of having this additional component of the comp plan is supported. A shout out to Ms. Haynes for chairing the Joint Advisory Group. Very, you know, they really did a huge amount of work with staff to make this plan a reality. So, you know, all around, again, the consensus on this too was to, yes, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to round robin this again, unless there's a strong interest in not doing that. Great, I'm Chair, we're doing it anyway. Um, okay, so that's what we will do. I'm going to encourage people to be briefish in their comments. And I do think that we may have some overlap, huh?
Or pass if they don't feel like it.
Or only Commissioner Weir passed last time, so he gets a hat or something. Um, cookie, maybe, whatever. But we're also going to start on this side, because I decided we can do that. Commissioner Striner, take it away.
Oh, well, thanks. So, well, I'm a big fan of the plan. I think it's great. And I really want to draw attention to the proactive sort of maintenance piece of it. You know, that storm that came by here July 29th caused a lot of problems in this whole area, and I think taking proactive measures, and it costs, I'm sure it costs a lot of, it costs the county a lot of money to clean up all those trees. So I think measures like that are really good and very forward-looking. That's all I'm going to say. As Forrest Gump would say, that's all I have to say about that. So I'm done there.
I'll just say thank you, and I gave feedback during the LRPC meeting, so I appreciate everything you've done.
Commissioner Lynn, tell me.
Same, my comments with the LRPC, so good work. Keep going, and look forward to seeing this in two months.
Commissioner Burkey?
Almost said I'll associate myself. No, um, yeah, it's getting late. No, thank you very much. I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
I'm very appreciative for the report. I anticipate that, you know, the request to advertise will be passed unanimously or something close to that by this body. And I think that's a testament to both the urgent need for this kind of plan, and for really to move forward on some climate change action, and the collaborative nature of the entire endeavor. We heard, you know, very positive comments from Ms. Haynes and from Ms. McIntyre, and I think that really speaks to the opportunity, and we are glad that, you know, I will speak for myself, I am glad I live in a place like Arlington where this is something that can, you know, be taken seriously and is a priority, and I look forward to, you know, implementing many of the recommendations that are put forth. So, thank you. Commissioner Sarley, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great plan. I plan to support it. I too was at the LRPC, and I feel like I've shared my thoughts. So thanks again, staff, for doing all the work, and I look forward to voting for this.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for elevating the tree canopy conversation over the years, so that it becomes, it's become a more important thing that everybody is much more aware of than, I believe, in the past few years. So I'm personally very interested in the increasing in protecting the tree canopy. As Vince knows, as a former BVSEA president, he would even email me and say, "We have to take a tree down, I'm really sorry," which was great, and I appreciated that. One of the things that I think I feel a little challenged by, number one, as a resident that lives a half a block from Quincy Park, that when you see trees come down, not on the public property, but on private property, and my little neighborhood is 85 years old, and there were two big trees taken down this past year. And I don't know if there's an outreach that can go in and suggest that perhaps, you know, something be planted instead. I also, when we have site plans, and even in my neighborhood in BVSEA, the site plans that have trees and they've been approved, and all of a sudden they're dying in the tree pits and stuff like that, I know there are places that we can call, but, and I know that you have finite resources, but I feel like we'll never really reach the 40%. You can't do it all just on the public land here. Some way we have to make more of an incentive to personal property owners. And even when developers come in and they, you know, scrape the lot and they put the requisite trees up, if they die a year later, is there anybody that's following up on that? So those are things that I just think about as a tree lover. And, you know, I'm hoping, I am fully supportive of this, and I'll always be supportive of all of your work, but I would always like to see us, how can we even get to that by going steps further? So thank you.
Thank you. We will move to our virtual commissioners. They're real people, they're just participating online. Commissioner Garen, you're up, and then Commissioner Weir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for clarifying that I'm a real person. I want to say this is an excellent plan. It represents a lot of hard work. Lots of staff and citizens worked together on this, and like many others, participate in the LRPCs and recognize the modifications made over time. It's gotten stronger and stronger. I want to echo Caroline Haynes' comments, and also thank Caroline and the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission for their work on this too. This plan is so much stronger than our prior iterations, and I'm really happy that forestry will be its own component in the comprehensive plan going forward. With regard to Commissioner Bradley's comments, and thank you for your pun, Commissioner Bradley, elevating the tree canopy, but the Tree Storers are another volunteer group that can help distribute trees to areas that are lacking them. And they're the ones who help make the trees that are available through the in lieu fees developers pay when they can't meet their onsite tree contributions. So just sharing that with the commissioners, who may not know that, but there is a lot of volunteer work behind the scenes on all of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garen. Commissioner Weir?
Once again, nothing to add to that, would you?
Okay. Thank you. I believe we've heard from all of the commissioners then. Does anyone have a motion to be made?
Yeah, I'll do the...
Okay. Commissioner Lynn Tellme, we'll make our motion.
Sure. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached resolution, Attachment 1, to authorize advertisement of public hearings by the Planning Commission on December 4, 2023, and the county board on December 16, 2023, to consider adoption of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan as an element of the comprehensive plan. Attachment 2.
Second. Jinx.
Thank you, Commissioner Tellme and Commissioner Striner. Do we need to speak to the motion? Are we ready to vote? Okay. Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lynn Tellme?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
Commissioner Seiburger?
Aye.
Forgot that. The motion passes nine to none. Thank you very much for your time. We look forward to seeing you in December.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right. Moving right along to PC business. All right, I believe first up, we need to pass some minutes. Yes?
Seek unanimous consent for that?
Yeah. I seek unanimous consent to accept the minutes from September 11. Was that just the one night? Okay, to accept the minutes from September 11th's meeting. Hearing no objection, the minutes are so adopted. Great. And now I believe we have some SPRC rosters, thank you, I couldn't think of the word, to accept. Commissioner Peterson, I will look to you for that.
Thank you. I sent along my SPRC Chair Report earlier today, so we just need to amend some rosters. Colleagues, you recently received the proposed SPRC subgroup roster amendments for Red Lion Inn, Inn of Roslin, River House, and Wells Fargo Verizon. Madam Chair, I ask for your unanimous consent to amend the previously adopted rosters.
Any objection to unanimous consent? Okay, those rosters are so adopted.
Okay, that's it for me.
Great. I believe other commissions submitted their reports in writing. So I know we got our written report.
Just one little change for LRPC. We, I was saying, one meeting would be on 11/16, that may in fact be 11/15 instead, but it still hasn't, the agenda for that has not yet been finalized.
Okay. So the LRPC report is as written, but with a possible date change from 11/16 to 11/15.
Right.
We got a written ZOCO report, I believe, already. There is no report for PFRC, and anyone else that I'm missing report-wise. Okay. Anything else we need to cover in PC business? I don't believe so. Madam Clerk is shaking her head. Therefore, I'm going to gavel us out. This meeting stands adjourned until October 30th, next meeting. Thank you.
Did you see how hard Patrick Mahendrick?
Thank you. Great job, Sarah.
Plant, did you see that?
Thanks.